And then right at the top, there's two times.
I don't either. I'm gonna look at it and see.
Right there? Sweet.
Okay, it is 1:00 PM, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, today it is Commissioner Ortiz's turn for the pledge and the invocation.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and my God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for everything that you have given us. Lord, we just ask that you continue to bless us, help us to keep safe in our homes and be healthy. Lord, we ask that you just continue to be with our first responders as well, Lord, be with all of our leaders in the community, be with all those who are out there under different circumstances and just guide them with your love. Lord, we ask that you just continue to be in our hearts and be with us in this meeting today as we discuss important items, Lord. We ask that you just give us guidance and help us to speak with your will, Lord. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any corrections or changes that needed to be made? Okay, then the minutes down approved. Next up is public comment. This is a time for anybody to come up and give comment on something that is not on the agenda. You all have five minutes, and if you do come up, please state your name.
All right, Nathan Heck, pastor at the Nazarene Church here in Garden City. A couple of things, just wanted to say it was our pleasure, a couple of weeks ago when we had the incident at the high school, to be a support for the community. If there's anything we can do, I hope that doesn't happen again, but I know Roy was there at the church grounds, and we're just glad that we could be a support for the entire community during that time. Another thing we wanted to let you know about, on the putting of calendars, the National Day of Prayer is on May 4th. You guys are all invited to the Stevens Park area, which will have a time over the lunch hour from 12:00 to 1:00 for our time of prayer for our community, and everyone is invited to that. Also, we're planning our second Community Cultural Days on May 20th. We moved it back to a great time of coming and meeting our community. Last year, we had 12 countries represented. This year, we're hoping to have up to 20 countries represented, so it's gaining a lot of momentum. Just wanted to let you know about those things and appreciate all that you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Vicki Harshberger at Mosaic to allow the mayor to proclaim March 2023 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I'll make the motion. We approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I know that we have representatives from Mosaic. Would you like to come up and say something?
Sure. Thank you all for having us today, and, you know, being able to choose how you spend your day is a fundamental right that was long denied to people with intellectual developmental disabilities. So at Mosaic, we pursue opportunities for the people we serve to live full, meaningful lives on their terms. Our personalized services allow people to spend their days doing the activities they choose. So our theme this year is "My Day, My Way." In the pursuit to individualize people's day and to help them to be active members of the community while they participate in the activities they choose, to help them have a better life, Mosaic is focused on increasing the number of our Mosaic-at-Home providers in our community and across our network of 13 states. Mosaic-at-Home gives an independent contractor the opportunity to support a person like Shannon here in their home while receiving a professional wage. In return, while living with her provider, Shannon has become much more independent and enjoys her own room and experiencing the true community inclusion she has offered through this wonderful program. If anyone would like to learn more about Mosaic's mission, or to improve the lives, or to help improve the lives, or about Mosaic in general, of becoming a Mosaic-at-Home provider, please join us on March 16th at noon for our Discover the Possibilities free lunch and hear from people we serve themselves. Just RSVP by going to our website at mosaicinfo.org and giving us a call. And I do appreciate the support that we have here in Garden City. It's a wonderful community to be involved in.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. I know you'll probably want to photo.
Yes.
Okay. So whereas the month of March 2023 has been designated as National Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, in order to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities, and whereas disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the right of people with disabilities to make choices, contribute to society, and experience in full the many blessings of American society, and whereas family members, friends, and the community at large all play a role in supporting people with disabilities as they pursue their dreams, and whereas the goals of this city properly include people with disabilities realize full access to housing, employment, and the recreation activities which help create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Deborah Euler, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Garden City and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed the 7th day of March 2023.
Do you have any questions on those? Hearing none, I'll call your attention to the meetings of note. If any of those require RSVPs, please do those through City Clerk's office. Item 9A, if approved, is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2574-2023A.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2574-2023A.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to consider adoption of a redevelopment project plan within the Garden City Plaza Redevelopment District and set a public hearing for April 18th, 2023, for the Woodmont Company doing business as Garden City Plaza LLC. If approved, this would be resolution number 3004-2023.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item before you, I've been before you a number of times related to this project since September, so we've already moved forward with the CAD and the IRB. So the ask for you today is to take the next step related to the TIP, so that's setting the public hearing. As Matt mentioned, the public hearing would be held on April 18th at 1:30 in this room. So the alternatives before you are to approve the resolution of intent to establish that public hearing or not approve the resolution of intent. Staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution of intent to set the public hearing to consider adoption of the redevelopment project plan related to the TIP request. There is no fiscal impact related to establishing the public hearing. I would be happy if you guys had any questions, though.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3004-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential District to PF Public Facilities District for the property generally located at Track A of East Cambridge Square, Phase 3, south of 303 and 304, Parkview Drive. If approved, this will be ordinance number 2951-2023.
All right, good afternoon. The City of Garden City is requesting to rezone the property generally located south of 303 and 304, Parkview Drive, also known as Track A of East Cambridge, Phase 3, from R1 Single Family Residential District to PF Public Facilities District. This track land was originally part of the southeast part, however, it was not in the city's name. The surrounding property of the southeast park was rezoned to PF Public Facilities in 2022. The track was recently deeded back to the city and will be integrated with the future location of southeast park. The proposed land use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive and future land use map has shown this track categorized as multifamily residential potential. Parks are not permitted within the R3 Multifamily Residential District. Rezoning the property to PF Public Facilities District would allow for the track to be integrated with the rest of the southeast park. Rezoning the property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. The governing body may approve the request to the criteria in Section 27.040 listed below in the staff report. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request at the February 16th, 2023 meeting, and there are three alternatives. The first, the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Alternative two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And alternative three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends, alternative one, the governing body adopt the Planning Commission by recommendation approving the proposed ordinance.
Any questions?
That was 2951. Was that correct?
Yeah, I move to approve the governing, the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance number 2951-2023.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance to adopt the Garden City Comprehensive Plan 2023, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2952-2023.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Attorney Maxwell, Director of the Mayor and Development Services. I bring before you today consideration for the comprehensive plan adoption. The City of Garden City determined the need to update the 2009 comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan goes over options for the city as far as future land use development, community vision and character, economic development, houses, transportation, parks, and open space, community facilities, and infrastructure. The plan establishes goals for the city for the next 10 to 20 years. Staff has been working with RIC Engineering Company on the Garden City Comprehensive Plan and Downtown Plan. A contract was signed on October 6th, 2020, and since then, staff has been working with RIC Engineering Company to gather data. Large emphasis was placed on public outreach, so the schedule was extended to allow for a more robust process. RIC Engineering Company and staff held multiple community outreach sessions at the Food Truck Friday events, parades, the Big Pool, et cetera. Neighborhood Development Services, along with RIC Engineering Company, held a pre-meeting session on January 17th of 2023 with the City Commission to review a draft and a draft of both documents. At the meeting, it was determined to move forward with the final draft for review by the Planning Commission. And one little note, Britt is going to speak to that as well. The comments that were made for those changes have been addressed in the final document. The Planning Commission did approve recommendation of the adoption of the 2023 Garden City Comprehensive Plan, a vote from eight to zero. There are three alternatives. Alternative number one, the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Number two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by two-thirds majority vote. And number three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. Staff's recommendation is alternative number one, the governing body adopt the Planning Commission recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. If you have any questions for me, we do have, if it's able to get pulled up, PowerPoint that Britt is going to go through. It's a little bit more condensed than what you guys saw last time, but we wanted to see if we could get visual for those that might be viewing at home. Any questions for myself? If not, we'll turn it over to Britt.
I do have a question, or a point of clarification before we forget about it and lose track. If we get to the point where the Commission's interested in adopting this ordinance, the ordinance needs to be amended from what's shown to reflect, or the preamble of it, an ordinance amending, it needs to be adopting the comprehensive plan of the City of Garden City and repealing the current comprehensive plan, so the motion should reflect as, it should note the wording change in the preamble. Okay, that's all.
And do you have that? Oh, there we are. Right.
Britt, do you want to, Britt, do you want to clip it yourself, or do you want that?
Oh, okay.
Good choice.
All right. Good to see you all again, Mayor and Commissioners.
Welcome.
We'll go fairly quickly through this. Okay, there we go. So as Trent was mentioning, we were selected in late 2020. We began in late 2020. Engagement was an extended period to allow for robust numbers to come in and community engagement. Basically, we went from March 2021 through August of 2022. As Trent mentioned, the draft plan was presented to you all for discussion on January 17th, 2023, and Commission adopted it, adopted on February 16th. And the downtown plan is on a separate timeline just because of some noticing issues, I guess. So that's going before the Planning Commission next week, and will be before you, I believe, April 4th. So we did public outreach throughout the process. We had everything available in both English and Spanish, and other languages were available as well. In terms of all three surveys put together, we reached, I believe, over 13% of the total population. We did outreach at various events, like Trent mentioned, also the schools, middle school and high school, had also outreach to local retailers, various stakeholder meetings, especially with the downtown business community and property owners, Chamber of Commerce, Pillars Association, and the schools took along the way as well. And of course, we had check-ins with you all along the way, various pre-meetings and also meetings throughout the process with our steering committee. So it's been, it's a very robust and very comprehensive process throughout. So some themes from community engagement in terms of what we heard, and this is reflected in the document itself. And I heard the guy who checked in my hotel last night said, "Well, there's nothing to do here." And I said, "Well, there's stuff to do here." But it seemed, people seemed to provide that throughout their community engagement. They want more things to do, more entertainment. They want more housing. This is a very urgent need here in Garden City, really across the country, of all types of housing. Garden City, I think, is unique compared to most communities we deal with right now that they're very open to all ranges of housing. It's not exclusive to one type. I think everyone gets it here, everyone sees the need, everyone wants to get building. People still see downtown as the heart of the community. They really wanted to help bring it to life and want to see improvements there. And then throughout the process, and this is again not unusual for most communities, people want to see more trails, open space, and parks, and of course, you've adopted a Parks and Recreation Master Plan recently that speaks to all of that and will advance that goal. People also want more space for new employers, new retailers, everyone from the EDC down to just local people. They see the need for more retail, more employers to come to town. People want more regional attractors, and we've talked about that in terms of having a possibility of a civic center, a sports arena, a reading space. And people wanted to, the ability to diversify the jobs base and have jobs and opportunities available for young people here. And that means small businesses as well as large businesses, the ability to be entrepreneurial and start your own venture, for example. So the community vision, and these slides are some of the repeats from what we saw here in January here, community vision and visions of high quality of life, economic growth for everyone, a vibrant downtown, a community of character and vitality, both inward and outward, that meaning vitality and redevelopment here in the older parts of Garden City, as well as expansion on the other parts of the community. Continued development of regional attractions, which of course aligns with what we heard from the community. So housing, for the folks watching online, we've talked about this throughout the process. The City Commission has established a goal of adding 4,000 housing units by 2023, which is not that many years away now. It's a big goal, and to do that, the city will have to get involved potentially with land banking. Trent and his folks can actually get more involved in development activities, be more aggressive in recruiting developers and home builders to come here, and given the larger economy is perhaps slowing a bit, you might have a better opportunity now to get folks from other communities coming here to Garden City. People are open to greater density and diversity of housing types, development of skills for youth as part of that, you know, building the trades, people, the plumbers, the electricians, the welders, those are folks that every community really needs now, but if you build that base here locally, you provide opportunities for young people and hopefully also help the housing situation. And then also affordable housing initiatives. So beyond just increasing the base and number of housing, the city might also look at different tools and regulatory and incentive structures to promote affordable and attainable housing. With community character, we talked about in the plan, adding more enhanced community gateways, historic preservation, parking, street networks and connectivity, and there's kind of some high-level recommendations in the comprehensive plan. A lot of the details of this would be implemented through a code update process, but you see examples here of high-quality community gateways, buildings that are oriented more to the street, the idea of complete streets, that's that rendering in the bottom, so trying to plan for these quarters like Kansas and Fulton as comprehensively between land use, transportation, aesthetics, and so forth, trying to really create great corridors that serve the older parts of the community. Economic development, the land use plan calls for room for additional business park and one new industrial park, either to the southeast or to the northwest side of town. It calls for exploring the idea of an innovation district, that could be for small businesses, entrepreneurs, and so forth. And there's also, it speaks to opportunities for logistics or distribution centers and also internship programs here in Garden City. So economic development, this kind of goes beyond your typical, not some bolts of economic development, but the chapter for that speaks to exploring regional attractors, which the Commission was interested in and also the community. So exploring the idea of a convention or conference center, a sports arena or civic center, ice skating rink, amenities along the Arkansas River, and then, as we discussed in January, the possibility of perhaps locating some of these amenities at the fairgrounds where they have a central location and access to downtown. So that example image there is from Colby, their Colby Events Center, which I visited actually back in January on the way back home, and it's a pretty nice facility. It's a multipurpose facility, actually. So there's your future land use plan, which reflects all those different things we just talked about. You see room for a good amount of industrial and business park expansion to the southeast and to the northwest. The airport area is colored as blue. Airports are often colored as more of a municipal or public use, but we colored this as blue with a suggestion that some of the lands around the airport could be used for business purposes, business park uses around there. It has room for expansion of the community to the north and east in terms of residential and retail development. The older quarters in town like Kansas, Taylor, and Fulton calls for a mixed-use orientation, and I believe the item you all just saw a few minutes ago off Kansas Plaza speaks to that, the mixed-use idea along areas like Kansas Avenue. And it does show the river corridor, the Arkansas River, as a green corridor for open space and trail connections for the future. For transportation, we've talked a lot about regional highway improvements, four-lane Highway 3 up to I-70 down to the south towards Liberal, continuing the expansion of 50 towards Wichita with a four-lane even towards the west possibly as well. Local and regional transit, so we discussed, you know, regional bus lines. I did note in reading here the last couple of days, there is a Greyhound line, I think, that goes through here, but enhancing that. Colorado has the Pegasus Line, which is their kind of souped-up regional bus line that comes down through the springs and out to Lamar, so it's not that far away. You could actually connect in with that. Planning for complete streets, as we mentioned, really high-quality street quarters like Kansas and Fulton. It also speaks about how to plan for streets, new developments, this is pretty common sense planning, recommendations in terms of making sure that streets connect between developments, trying to have a good grid, disperse traffic, things like that. And expansion of the trail network. This condensed version today does not show the trail network, but we did call for more of a loop around the outsides of Garden City, and we also highlight some trails for improvement in the future. Parks, trails, and open space, of course, the Parks and Rec Master Plan was approved by you all back in December, so it got into more detail there, but we did highlight the Arkansas River corridor, making sure that local parks are connected to the trail system. Planning for parks as community grows, so essentially, just as the Parks and Rec Master Plan gets into more detail on that, planning for your neighborhood parks, your pocket parks, so on and so forth. And then really just, the idea for the comprehensive plan is to plan the bridge from the higher, high overarching guiding principles and goals to the more detailed recommendations of that other plan, Parks and Rec Master Plan. In terms of infrastructure, residency, community facilities, plants, it calls for expansion of the wire capacity, strong emphasis on conservation, we've talked about that through the process, things like zero escaping, changing landscape requirements, things like that, diversifying energy resources, preparing for adverse events, especially, I'd say wildfires, given the landscape and the current drought here in western Kansas is pretty front and center. But residency also speaks to economic and community residency, making sure we have a more diversified economy, not concentrated in one industry, and just really planning for the shocks that might face a community in the future. Our implementation chapter gets into details. We basically laid out for each action item, the key department in charge, partners of the city level from a governing body and planning commission, other boards and commissions perspective, ideas for general timing, and the prioritization, high, medium, or low. And then, as Trent was alluding to, a summary of the final edits, there actually were a few more to the downtown plan, which you'll see upcoming, than to the comprehensive plan, but here we swapped out the cover photo to have a more global aerial view of the community. We reformatted some of the tables to, just to kind of produce some comments from you all. We made a few updates to the bike and ped map. We added some language coming out of our last discussion about forming a working group to explore fairgrounds, opportunities with the county, and there were other just small readability edits here and there throughout, but in large part, it hasn't changed a whole lot from what you saw in January. So with that, we'll see you again in April for the downtown plan, but it's been a pleasure working on this, and we thank you and open it for questions or for a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2952 with the edited or amended ordinance saying adopting instead of amending the comprehensive plan of the City of Garden City.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your motion carries. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Good job.
I will tell you, it was really useful during the Commission's annual retreat, having this, even though we had the draft, it was still really useful with a lot of the information, so thank you.
Well, we want to see these things used, not so much.
Yeah, this is huge.
That's right.
It's really well done.
Yeah, good luck with moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Britt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from C2 General Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District with a planned commercial development overlay for the property generally located at 1204 North Taylor Plaza. And if approved, this would be ordinance number 2953.
And please note that Commissioner Ortiz has stepped down.
Well, back again for another consideration. This is kind of those plans and those amendments that have already changed coming to fruition, where this is a project that is utilizing or wanting to utilize the PCD. So this is the, the applicant is Kansas Food Bank Warehouse, Inc. It is requesting to rezone the property generally located 1204 North Taylor Plaza from C2 General Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District with a PCD planned commercial development. Property hasn't existed. commercial development. Property has an existing 19,200 square foot building on the property. The applicant intends to use the existing building for a warehouse for Kansas Food Bank. The PCD plan includes an addition of paving, sidewalk, an addition of 4,000 square feet in the future to the building. The applicant has submitted a preliminary site plan, includes the plan of the property, and that's on one of your attachments. The existing building is built approximately 1 foot 8 inches away from the north property line, and requesting to build a future addition to line up with the existing building. The current setback is 30-foot. However, the PCD overall allows an applicant to request variances through the plan. The property has 13 existing parking stalls and intends to add paving in the back for a docking and loading station. At this time, the applicant intends to build sidewalk along 13th, which is east side upon the construction of the new paving area, and is requesting a variance from the sidewalk requirement along Alma Street. Kansas Food Bank would install the remainder of the sidewalk along Genie Avenue upon construction of the future 4,000 square foot addition. Staff analysis, this project will be required to go through site plan review process, which will allow staff to review the layout, drainage, parking, and other aspects. Sidewalks will be required to comply with the code of ordinances. However, the governing body may consider a waiver from the applicant with the PCD plan. The property was platted in 1885. However, a replat will be needed in the future. The governing body may approve the request according to the criteria of 27.040. Below is the complete least of that criteria. Planning Commission did meet on this February 16th, 2023. We had six votes to approve and two to abstain. The alternatives today are alternative number one, the governing body may adopt the planning commission recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Number two, the governing body may override the planning commission recommendation by two-thirds majority vote. Number three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff's recommendation recommends that the governing body approve the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. And myself, I know we have a Kansas Food Bank representative here as well, so questions for me or them, we'll take it this time.
No, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate that the, you know, we talked about distribution centers and warehousing and this kind of, this kind of opportunity, and I really appreciate what this is going to open up for, I mean, if it's approved, for southwest Kansas, and knowing that, you know, it's just not our community that's impacted, but really, the whole southwest, you know, southwest Kansas is going to be, you know, impacted in a positive way by having opportunities at food items that normally we wouldn't have because of either storage or travel, how long it takes. So I was really excited about this project.
Yeah, I'm pleased that they were able to find a location that was suitable for them, because I know that they've been looking for a long time. So do they have any comments that you'd like to make?
I have nothing but very compliments, actually.
Could you state your name real quick?
I'm Ryan Walker with the Kansas.
Thank you.
I think I know my dad was in public works forever in New York, Kansas. But I just want to say that your staff has been great to work with you this whole process. You know, it's new to us. They've been very helpful. So I would like, just for you folks to know what kind of help they've been on this project. And we certainly have approved, look forward to being a part of this community. That's why I'm here today. I wanted, I wanted to let you know that we're here, well, we wish we weren't here for the long haul, but we're here to be a part of this community moving forward. And you are very correct, this is going to change the look of how hunger relief is done in western Kansas. We're working with the state foundation out of Topeka to do actually some work with all the different food pantries throughout the 31 counties of western Kansas. So we appreciate it. It's going to be great for the folks of Garden City and all throughout the western Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
You bet.
I make a motion we approve ordinance 2953-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Item 12A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a pre-construction contract between the city of Garden City and Crossland Construction for fire station and EMS station number three.
And note that Commissioner Ortiz has recused himself as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On January 25th, 2023, the Garden City Fire Department closed the request for qualifications for the Garden City Fire Station EMS Station number three. During that time, the RFP was open, the Garden City Fire Department received five submissions. City and county staff reviewed all submitted proposals on January 27th, 2023, and scored them. City and county staff decided to move forward in the interview process with five contractors. During the interview with the five firms that submitted proposals, city and county staff agreed that Crossland Construction was the firm of choice due to their experience with building 49 fire stations. After speaking with Crossland Construction and the project being over budget, city and county staff will be meeting with the representatives from Crossland Construction to discuss possible savings on the project. During the interview process, Crossland Construction presented a presentation identified numerous areas of where we could benefit project savings in the budget. The agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and signed by Crossland. The next item that will be brought before you will be the guaranteed maximum price. Alternatives, alternative one would be to approve the pre-construction contract between Crossland Construction and the city of Garden City. Alternative two would be deny the pre-construction contract and provide further guidance. Staff recommends alternative one. I did ring Wade if we have any questions for Crossland or myself.
Well, they've done an incredible job on, you know, the work they're doing already in Garden City. So I think you've made a wise choice. Yeah, I move that we approve the pre-construction contract between Crossland Construction and the city of Garden City.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in the other discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's taken a while.
You were doing a little bit of reading.
Get signed up for some stuff.
12B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a temporary use waiver for Sports of the World to install a temporary concrete batch on-site. Danielle.
Good afternoon again. Dick Construction is currently the contractor working on the Sports of the World project, and they are quickly getting to the point of that project where they need to start pouring quite a bit of concrete over the next several months. So in anticipation of this, they had reached out to staff to see if there would be an ability to temporarily install a portable concrete batch plant on-site to reduce the amount of truck traffic that would be required if the concrete were to be mixed off-site. Staff generally is supportive of this request. However, it is not currently a permitted use. So a lot of the staff conversation really focused on the safety and kind of reducing the number of those vehicles moving through our community. It should be noted that in March, the planning commission will consider an amendment to the temporary use permit to include this as a permitted use within our regulations, provided that a number of criteria are met. So one, the concrete that's mixed has to be used for the project on-site. It has to be a minimum of 200 feet away from any adjacent developed lot. It has to be on a lot of land that is 10 acres or larger, and is only permitted to be in use from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So those are the criteria that we would hold this contractor to as well, but wanted to get this moving a little bit quicker than what that formal process is going to be to come to you all for consideration in April. So the alternatives before you are to approve the request to install or allow a temporary concrete batch plant on-site of Sports of the World. Alternative two would not, to be to not allow that use. And then alternative three would be provide staff alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve their request and to install a temporary concrete batch on-site of the Sports of the World project. And there is no fiscal impact related to this. I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
No, I was just kind of reading through Michael Seltzer's letter. I think only the one thing that stuck out to me was the fact that it'll be directly behind a residence house. So just, I know he's probably made contact with that person and that household just to kind of update, but didn't see any formal written notice that he did contact them. But that's just the only thing that stuck out.
Yeah. And I do appreciate the staff's willingness to get this going and trying to come up with a good solution, because when we are talking about a project of this size and the amount of truck traffic that we would be getting, I mean, this is a pretty good alternative that I think works best for all parties involved. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I move to approve the request to install temporary concrete batch plant on-site of Sports of the World.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a quote from LNL Flooring Covering to replace the carpet and baseboards in the Sixth Street Recreation Center for $22,797.88.
Afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you, as you're familiar with Sixth Street, and you've been in there, currently we have tiled floor, and then we have some carpeted areas, especially in the office area, that is at least 25 years old and in badly need of replacement. The project calls to replace it with carpet squares. We will go straight over the tile, but we will remove the existing carpet and replace it at that point. That would land throughout the entire hallway into the entrances of both the gym and the fitness studios and classrooms. Additional carpet, and we have it in the entryways, but this will protect those sportwood floors by a far greater deal. It also calls to replace the lovely teal vinyl baseboards with a more neutral color, black. We did reach out to our two local vendors that do carpet installation, LNL Flooring and JNM Paint. LNL Flooring provided the lowest quote at $22,797.88. The alternatives before you, the governing body may approve the quote from LNL Flooring for $22,797.88, or the governing body may deny the quote from LNL Flooring and give staff an alternative direction. We recommend that we approve alternative one. Just a fiscal note on this, at the last meeting, we brought the vehicle in front of you with the reserve fund purchase, and that was a $27,000 purchase. This would also be purchased out of those reserve funds that were transferred over a total of $99,000. So if this is approved, we would expend about a total of 51,000 of those transferred over reserve funds. But we do not anticipate any additional purchases for the year out of that fund. It is unbudgeted, so that's why we wanted to make sure to bring it in front of you today. Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the quote from LNL Flooring Covering for the $22,779.88.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I did want to say that facility is really well-kept. I mean, I am serious. It is really clean. I really appreciate it. When you walk in there, from the time you walk in to leave, it's really well-done. So, you know, to your staff, your maintenance staff, and also just everyone, it's really a neat facility, so.
Item 12D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of the community grant funds as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board. Danielle.
Two more items. Good afternoon. In 2019, the Community Health Advisory Board, or CHAB, was tasked with administering the community grant. Guidelines for that application were published on the city's website for this year, beginning on December 22nd of 2022, and it was opened through January 27th of 2023, giving agencies about five weeks to get that application submitted. 14 agencies submitted an application for the 2023 community grant with requests totaling just north of $87,000. The city commission had authorized $31,500 in the 2023 budget for the community grant award. On February 14th of 2023, the board met at its regularly scheduled meeting to review the applications and make a recommendation for awarding funds. Nine of the 14 agencies that requested funds are being recommended to be at least partially funded through CHAB's recommendation. There was one agency that had requested funds through both the community grant application process as well as the arts grant process. And when creating the art grant, the governing body established the new community grant program guidelines that deemed applicants ineligible for a community grant if they were eligible for AFAK or arts grants. And that is indicated in the application. So that applicant is noted here and was not recommended to be funded. The board, really, the discussion was they felt that that was more appropriate under that arts grant process. So the group reviewing that will review that application. Three alternatives before you this afternoon. One is to approve CHAB's recommendation to award $31,500 in community grant funds to the nine agencies outlined in the memo. Alternative two is to not approve that recommendation, and alternative three would be to provide staff with alternative direction. The Community Health Advisory Board recommends that the governing body approve their recommendation in awarding those nine agencies the total of $31,500. And the fiscal note is that those funds would be taken out of that GL account code. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Danielle, I had one question, and they asked me directly, and this was just last night, so I didn't have time to call you. But an applicant who had said that they had applied for this or is not on here, is there a process that if something was wrong on the application, that they contacted back that organization or that person?
I would certainly ask them to reach out to me. I'm not aware of any agencies that were expecting to see their application and were not. I did reach out before the CHAB meeting to all of the agencies that were going to be discussed at that meeting, so I didn't hear.
Okay. It was a celebrate recovery, and I think maybe, was it your church, Nathan, that?
It's the guy from like.
It's, okay, okay. So that went to that grant. Okay. That was a question to me, and I forgot to contact you about where that's at. So I wanted to get that answered for them.
Yeah. AFAK, a portion of AFAK will be next on the agenda. But there is a portion of the AFAK funding that will still need to come before you for consideration. So there are kind of two paths to that funding.
All right.
Danielle, is it in the guidelines for the program that taxing entities are ineligible for community grants?
It does not expressly prohibit that, no.
Okay, all right.
No.
I thought the applications were really well-done. I was surprised at the level at which you could fund all of them. So, and I really appreciate, I know it's a lot of hard work to read all the applications and then go through everything, but I thought you did an exceptional job.
Yeah. I will pass that along to the board. They put a lot of work into that.
It is a lot of work.
And the $31,500 is the full budgeted amount?
Correct. Yep, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I move that you approve that CHAB's recommendation to award $31,500 in community grant funds to nine agencies as outlined in the memo.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for all the work from the committee, too. It's hard to score applicants.
Item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of the second portion of the 50,000 of the AFAK funds as recommended by the Livwell Finney County Board.
All right, AFAK funding. So the Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee was established in 1982 to advise the governing bodies of both the city and the county on distributions of alcohol consumption tax funds. We kind of identified the specific state statute that articulates how those dollars can be utilized. So a third of the dollars go to the general fund, a third special parks and recreation, and a third to special alcohol and drug programming. The AFAK funds for the last couple years have been split 50/50. The first portion is managed by staff, and that has a cap of $6,000. Those will be the recommendations that come to you next week. The item before you today is the second portion of that funding, and that is what is reviewed by Livwell Finney County. And those requests can exceed the $6,000 threshold. So there were two applicants, Big Brothers and Big Sisters and Real Men with Real Leaders, that were considered for the second distribution of funding. And they were reviewed by the Livwell Finney County Board at their meeting in February. The Big Brothers, Big Sisters request was for $14,000. Livwell Finney County Board's recommendation was to fully fund that request at 14,000. So the alternatives before you this afternoon related to this are to approve the recommendations as outlined by Finney County Board. Alternative two would be to not approve those recommendations, and three, you could provide alternative direction and send it back to them for further review. So staff recommends that the governing body approve the recommendation to award both applicants as outlined by Livwell Finney County Board. The fiscal note related to this is, again, that'll expend $22,000 of the $50,000 that was identified for this portion of funding, so we do have those funds budgeted. I would be happy to answer any questions. Callie Dyer is also here with Livwell Finney County, who may be able to speak to some of the board conversation as well.
So I do, I really appreciate it, I know the, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I mean, $14,000, and I looked at their impact, I mean, it's about $400 per, per individual that they're really impacting, but this is, again, for a whole year, so it's a pretty big bargain, and, and I think the same thing with Real Men, Real Leaders, what they do with those funds and what the ability to those funds, so I, I really appreciated both of the applications, so.
Are they coming, did they come in, like, to introduce some of those Real Men, Real Leaders? I think they did it one time before, I think it would be good to just have those kids come and kind of see their faces, because I think they did it one time before, and I'm not sure if that was two years ago or last year, but just to kind of show their face. Same with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that would be great to have them come in sometime and we can see their faces.
Callie, you wanted to say something?
Real Men, Real Leaders, they came in and learned something about the process.
Right.
I think Shannon.
Usually they, yeah, they'll meet with the mayor and the vice mayor, yes.
Apparently I know that because Steve's on the board.
Right.
Who's Steve? I haven't even, no, I'm kidding, I know, he's one of the Real Men.
Just haven't seen him for a while. No, that's, just maybe a little request out there, invite them over, would be good.
I make a motion, we approve the recommendation of the award for both applicants as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item F is the consent agenda. If there aren't any items that you'd like to pull off and discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items F1 through 7.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda F1 through 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item F is the consent agenda. If there aren't any items that you'd like to pull off and discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda items F1 through 7.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming in. Nathan, thanks for those dates, I'm sure we'll probably get those on the meetings of note, so we can maybe possibly attend that Community Culture Day and, and the National Day Prayer, that's, that's an awesome event. I mean, that's, I know they do the prayer at the flags, too, at the schools, and that's, that's a pretty neat deal to attend. I know sometimes they're like early in the morning at seven or something, so.
That's not early.
Well, for some people, it's early. I don't have to be at work till nine, so, no, but I get there at eight, so, any aside, thanks. You guys are getting me off track here. Development Disabilities Awareness Month, that was a great opportunity to see Shannon here with Vicky, so look forward to seeing them, March 16th at noon. I think that might be all I have, so, looks like it's a short discussion for me. I'm done, thank you.
Commissioner Dick.
I'd also like to put a vote in for seven o'clock being early. Good pre-meeting, talking about incentives and, and how we're going to get to some of our goals as a community, so that was good, and thanks for the effort to put into that, and also the discussion about how we can continue to move, I think that was good. The thing I'd like to highlight is just the effort of not only the police department, but our community as a whole, as Pastor Heck said when he first came up about the swatting incident that we had at, at our high school, and talked to Chief Pruitt afterwards just to see how things went and everything, and, and he had really good things to say about the response of not just our police officers, but other law enforcement agencies around our community, how they came together, the Church of Nazarene for the staging point that they offered, EMS, fire, I mean, it was, it's one of those things that you don't really ever get a chance to train in that way, but they, they took advantage of it and, and really did a good job and, and learned a lot of things, a little bit of room for improvement, but overall, it sounded like the, the prep that we had going into an event like that has paid off, and, and the response was good, and, and, and so, just, just thanks to everybody who, who took that seriously and made sure that we were prepared, so that if something like that does happen, we will be able to respond appropriately, and that, that's all I have, so.
Okay. Commissioner Unruh.
So I want to say thank you also to Vicky and Shannon for coming. Vicky always is very, very good about really making us aware of how many people, the diverse group of people that live in our community, and I really appreciate, and she always brings, I love that she brings like a really great attitude and brings everyone with her to, to help us. The comprehensive plan, it is massive, it is, I really enjoy reading it, it's really well-done, so I don't know how we're going to distribute that, I know it'll be on our website, but expect a very long download time, because if you, yeah, it's not going to download very quickly. But I think the quality of the plan is really, really excellent, and it had some, and it really brought together, this is a guiding document for the next 10 years, which will pass very quickly, and so I just want to, I say thank you to all of those who participated. I'm really excited about the Kansas Food Bank, this is a game changer for, you know, when you talk about food insecurities and you talk about the need for, to really make an outreach, and I, I think having this in, in Garden City really speaks to the leadership and the commitment we have to making sure that we are a leader on some of the biggest issues that we face as, just as a region. I really appreciate also, I think that I saw in the budget that, on the consent agenda, that the mayor will be signing a, a big check for $449,700 for the, for the trail, and I really appreciate our, our commitment to trails. I know these are things that, if you, if you use them, they're really valuable, if you don't, you really should because they're really valuable, but I mean, these are things that we are making an investment for our future, and so there's been a lot of planning and a lot of, a lot of infrastructure going into these kind of things, and so sometimes these things get kind of forgotten or hidden down into our consent agenda, but I'm excited about what's happening at Southeast Park, I think it's going to be an excellent resource. Dean Wiley is so well-used, I think this is another one of those parks that, along with the skate park, if you've been by that recently, are going to be one of those, a couple of places that are really going to be heavily used, I think, by all of Garden City, and really the region, so I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for getting those things going, and we're excited about that.
Commissioner Cessna.
Attended the push-in ceremony for the two new brush trucks, what a valuable asset those two vehicles are, going to be for not only our community, but, you know, if they need to be called on for the region, but very valuable pieces of equipment that have been added to our arsenal for our fire department. Great to see those finally arrive in, in the community. I thought Commissioner Ortiz was going to say something, but I just want to congratulate all of our student athletes at the high school for their winter sports activities, some record-setting events by our basketball team, going 20 and 1, our wrestling team, we're runners-up this year, so, great job to all of our student athletes and representing our community well. Just wanted to mention, too, that spring break is next week, so everybody stay safe during that time, and just a big thank you to the first responders for their quick response, even though it was a, it was determined as a fake call, they treated it as a real response, and it was, it was a great event, that, a good training exercise for everybody to get everything mobilized, and, and you're right, it helped us to, it helped everybody to learn where we needed to improve, so, again, thank you to all the first responders and your quick response to that situation, and that's all I've got.
I enjoyed the opportunity last week for the goal-setting retreat, it was, I wanted to make sure that the staff knew how much I, at least, and I'm sure that the other commissioners did, too, appreciated all of the pre-work that was done prior to that day, because that really did help as far as being able to come prepared for a goal-setting retreat, and, you know, to kind of get a good understanding of what things might be possible and what things aren't, and, so, but, so it was really quite helpful, I know, for me, and so, thank you guys for everything that you did leading up to that, because I'm sure, I know that the work was hard, I mean, not only do we set the goals, but then, you know, the updates, and, and you all really do the work of those comprehensive plans and keeping us updated, and so, thank you for all that you do for that, because I know that it doesn't go unnoticed, and we just wanted to make sure that you knew that. I also enjoyed the push-in ceremony, I know those brush trucks were ordered, what, in 2021, I think is when we approved them, and so, it's, it's a long time, you know, waiting for two of them, but I know that they'll be put to good use, and they'll be very, very helpful in a fire, especially out in the county, or a brush fire, things like that, but they're just, I mean, I enjoyed riding in it and being able to, you know, spray, it was, that was a lot of fun, I mean, you're just like a little kid again when you get in there, so. The pre-meeting was also good, thank you for all of the work that, that you guys did for that, to be able to go through all of the, just, you know, familiarize with all of the economic development tools that are available, and then kind of looking at some policy decisions that will need to be made about RHID, I mean, it's, it's a good refresher for me, but then also just, you know, being able to think some of those things through. And also thanks to, or congratulations to the agencies that received the grants from CHAB and AFAK. I, you know, a lot of those organizations, you know, do a lot of good work, and I know that as a committee, it's difficult to go through some of those applications and decide on an amount, decide whether or not the funding is going to, you know, be available to them or not, is always an interesting discussion to have, but good decisions, and I appreciate all of those who applied, so, and take advantage of some of those granting opportunities as well, so. Anything else that you guys have? All right, well, I call the meeting closed.